Everybody to the regular city council meeting on August 5th, 2024. I will open the meeting and please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Spear?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Neal?
Present.
Councilmember Mortenson?
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Here.
Councilmember Delaney?
Present.
And I probably should announce, although you can see it, that our mayor is on Zoom. And I am the Mayor Protem Laura Spear. I'll be leading us in our meeting. And we will start out with a proclamation for the National Night Out, which is proclaiming Tuesday, August 6th, 2024, as National Night Out in the city of Evans, Colorado. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch held the first National Night Out in 1984 by encouraging neighbors to turn on their porch light and sit in front of their homes. And whereas this year, over 38 million neighbors from 17,000 communities will participate in the event. And whereas National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Evans to join with thousands of other communities across the nation in prompting cooperative police community partnerships to keep our neighborhoods safe. And whereas the citizens of the city of Evans play a vital role in assisting the police department through joint crime and drug prevention programs. And whereas police community partnerships and neighborhood safety and awareness are important themes of the National Night Out programs. And whereas the city of Evans encourages citizens to organize block parties and other events to bring neighbors together to celebrate this event. And whereas members of the city council and city staff will visit the many celebration sites and meet with our community members to foster positive relationships and dialogue. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Evans does hereby formally designate Tuesday, August 6th, 2024, as National Night Out in the city of Evans and encourage all citizens to join with our police department in keeping Evans a great place to live, work, and play. In testimony whereof, the mayor of the city of Evans has hereunto subscribed his name and has caused the official seal of the city of Evans to be hereunto affixed on the 5th day of August, 2024. And... Do I have anybody that is going to accept this proclamation? All right. Our wonderful chief? All right. Yep, thank you. The next item on the agenda, we have some awards and recognition. And we will start with our August Yard of the Month. Do we have a staff member? Report? Do you want to give a report?
Nope, I'm just giving you...
Okay, all right. Well, the August Yard of the Month is Alvaro and Hinia Mendoza. Are they here? And we have, are they here? Oh, right, if you want to come up. And we have a yard sign. All right, here's your award. Thank you. And this is a gift card. And this is your yard sign to take home if you would like to put it in your yard. Thank you very much for keeping a nice yard and making our community look great. Do you want to turn around and get a picture? Thank you. And next we have an award for the Evans Beautifully Landscape Business Award. This is a newer award. And it is to Mod Box Storage. And do we have anybody here from Mod Box?
Yes.
Perfect. Bless you.
Thank you, sorry.
Hi, nice to meet you. Your award and a couple of, and the New York sign, let's take care of it. Next on the list here on the agenda is audience participation. And it does look like we have a couple of members of our audience that would like to speak. First up, Deb?
Can I move this down here? I'm a little short. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, councilmembers. My name is Deb Suniga and I'm the Public Relations Director for the Latino Coalition of Weld County. And I appreciate this opportunity to come up to you at this time because we would like to invite the city of Evans to participate in a new festival that we are putting on together with the city of Greeley and the University of Northern Colorado called Fiesta de la Hente. As you well know, 48.8% of your population here in the city of Evans is Latino or BIPOC origin. And this is an opportunity, one, to kick off the Hispanic Heritage Month in September, and two, to celebrate that University of Northern Colorado has just become an HSI-serving institute, which means for Hispanic heritage or BIPOC children, the opportunity to go to college has become even more apparent for them. We are working with School District 6 to have our kids through, our Latino and BIPOC kids come through the school district to be able to participate in this. And what we have done for this event is we are going to be having multiple exciting opportunities. We have right now 35 different community-based organizations that will be participating. We have multiple food trucks. I'm pretty excited about the Nacho Libre Wrestling because I don't know if you ever saw that movie with Jack Black. It was really interesting. But I think one of the best things that we have coming is our keynote speaker will be, if you ever saw the movie Flaming Hot, Richard Montanez, who was an immigrant and was a janitor for Frito Lay, who invented the flaming Cheeto. He will be our keynote speaker along with Senator Paulie Baca, who was our very first Latina senator. We will have former mayor of Denver, Frederico Peña. Through local, we also will have state education Rhonda Solis. And on the School District 6 Board, Dr. Brenda Campos-Spears. So when I'm coming here to you today, and I've had a very nice conversation with your city manager, I wrote an email, so all of that information will be laid out for you. It is on September 7th, it's a Saturday, from 10 to 4. And we do have participation with the city of Greeley in the amount of $10,000 to be a sponsorship. We would like to invite you folks as well to become a sponsor with us and have both cities be the main sponsor for Richard Montanez. The opportunity, we're so excited. The other thing that we'll be bringing in a lot of people is we're going to have a three-on-three soccer tournament for kids and adults. And that, right now, we're at 400 people for participation. So this is going to be a very big event. We hope to have this go on and on for years. One of the things, we used to be residents of Evans and I always think that Evans gets, we forget about the city of Evans, even your sisters, our sister city. So I wanted to be the one to come out and invite you personally. And if you have any questions for me, I'm ready to answer.
I think you said the date, September 7th, but where is it?
At UNC, I'm sorry. It's at the University of Northern Colorado in the Candelaria Gardens. So we'll have that whole area over there. Again, like we'll have the wrestling, and we'll also have music, food trucks, local vendors, I think we have some. But I think one of the things that we wanted to make sure is that our communities had the community-based organizations of services that they'll be able to see. And with the opportunity with what they're doing at, I believe it's at Meeker, Dr. Campos has that for the bilingual. And then what UNC is doing with the HSI. It's a great opportunity for our kids to see what they can do. And then we're listening to these speakers. The opportunities are endless. I mean, you have Councilwoman Johnson, who sits on your council as well, so of Latino origin. So this is an opportunity for those kids to see what they can do in their future.
Well, I'm certainly looking forward to the event. And I think that we have some discretionary funds that maybe we need to have a discussion over to see if this is something that we'd like to participate in. So something to talk about and we can get back.
I have my business card, I'll leave it for you, Cody, over here. And thank you for the opportunity to speak, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Sorry. And there's also Stacy Suniga forgot to sign up to speak to you too. So if you could add her to yours, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, we also have Ron here. Would Ron like to come and speak?
How are you all doing? So I'm with the Rush Event Center. So I just wanted to kind of, this is kind of a different thing. I need to kind of get some stuff kicked off, I guess, to kind of let you know where we're at over there. You know, we're in our first full swing of business, you know, our first full season. And it's probably running a little bit under where we thought it was going to be. But there are some things that we're finding out that were, that just through Facebook and comments and different things like that, that we need to try to get a hold of. One of them is the signage, just trying to get some direction to where this place is at. I think one of the bigger challenges that we got is where we're located. It seems like it's a great place, it's right off Highway 85, but we're kind of tucked away from everything as well. So we've had a lot of comments of coming off of 37th, they don't know where to turn. I use Google, you use Google. But what I was after is trying to get the city to provide some type of signage, not necessarily to rush necessarily, but you know, a family amusement park this way or something like that as an attraction. You know, they come up 37th to get on Carson, there's really no way of knowing where that's at. Coming off of 42nd onto Carson, same thing. I've had a couple of conversations with several people here in the city just trying to figure out how do you get the ball going. And so I just wanted to get that in front of you and maybe where you might be able to push that around a little bit to see if we could get some cities help there to help us get some signage and some directions of how to get to that place. So I don't know how to proceed from this point, but if, you know, if you could either email me or whoever needs to maybe contact me to get me to the next level. But I've asked this about a month ago, a month and a half ago. I've talked to Heather, I've talked to some other people, like what are the rules? There's some existing city signs that we could put stuff on that wouldn't be a big deal. I offered to pay for the signs, I offered to put the pole in the ground. I mean, it's, but I think the city ought to help with that a little bit too. You know, it's one of the bigger things that this city has here. And we're trying to grab people from the west and bring them in. And so if there's a way you guys can come to an agreement or figure out a way that you can kind of help us out with some directional signage, I'm after that. The other thing is I've been here since we opened the place is there were supposed to be some grants available for me. Different things of whether we're doing landscaping in the front or whatever we're doing. But Alyssa, when she was here, there was a lot of conversations, yeah, there's some stuff available. That's another thing that just keeps falling through the crack and I keep getting pushed, passed on from one person to the other. So I'd like to see if you guys could do anything there to help me out and see if there's any grants available for us, you know, to help us out. The other thing is in the beginning as well, we did a development agreement. I'd like to try to find a way to get a hold of that thing and take another look at it now that we've been in business for a year, year and a half. Some of the things that were listed in that development agreement, you know, where we're at as a business, you know, putting the security up for the sidewalk in the front on the north side, that was a tough one for me to get there. But the part of the agreement was to have the sidewalk in the front and some landscaping on the northeast corner in the front. What we would like to see is if we could renegotiate that development agreement or dissolve it or just take a look at where we're at. But we really like to take that money and reinvest it more on the east side, the highway side, to try to boost that look over there. There's a lot of work, that's over a 350-long foot of fencing and everything that's there. And we just need to try to grab the attention off the highway to, you know, to bring people's attention over there. So what I'd like to try to figure out is if there's a way we can renegotiate that thing or do something where I could take those funds and move them on the east side instead of the north side with that, you know, the sidewalk to nowhere, everybody calls it. That place has been built since 1994 and it's never had a sidewalk until I got in there. So I want to see if there's any way we can kind of adjust that a little bit to try to help the business succeed. And I think by, you know, blowing up the east side over there by the highway and trying to get people's attention of that, hey, we're open and we're here, would help and go a long way. So that's another thing, I'm just trying to kickstart a lot of these subjects off. I've talked about them, we've discussed them, but it just seems like it falls dead in the water after a while. So I really need to get serious about pushing on some of that stuff. You know, we're in a critical year. The thing's tough to stay open, you know, it really is. And so all the help the city can give us is appreciated. The other thing, the last thing I got is just we had, this last weekend, we had a concert there. And it's probably one of the louder ones, but usually we had our bands there from 6 to 9. And I think the ordinance is to 10 o'clock, I think. It's been so hot that we moved the bands from 7 to 10 just to give them a break. The way the stage sets, it faces the sun. But all said and done, you know, it probably did get a little loud. They ran over, I don't know, probably 10 or 15 minutes. But we had two cop cars and three cops at the front gate of the rush because we were too loud at about 10:10 at night. I guess, there could have been a lot of different ways to handle that besides that, you know what I mean? They could have parked in the front, they could have walked through the event center, they could have come and found me, but they lined up in the front of that event center and with, you know, the kids and everybody else who's there, it just was unnecessary. So one of those things I like to talk about is I need to get to the middle of that. You know, we are, want to be a music venue. And I understand the ordinance, I understand there's rules and all that kind of thing. But there has to be a little bit of give and take there, a little bit when we're doing what we're trying to do. And that's, you know, have a music venue there to invite families and people to enjoy themselves back there. Some of the ordinance didn't really list decibel readings. The ordinance basically leaves it up to the person, the cop that shows up or whatever, to determine if it's an unreasonable noise. And so I think there's just room for discussion there for us, you know. We had 10 concerts this summer, we had three last summer. That was the first one that probably was a little louder than the rest. But typically speaking, we've been doing fine. But I'd like to have a conversation with that as far as what can we do there in the future? Because we're not going to really stop having concerts, but we just got to get everybody on the same page of what we're trying to do. So a lot of this stuff I'm talking about is really just trying to find a way to get the conversation started, who to talk to, how to get it done, and not have it, our season's five months long, really. And so I got to act quickly, we got to move quickly, we got to figure out these solutions so that I can keep moving, you know. That's the only way this thing's going to succeed. And so I could use your help and help in, you know, drive that conversation, find the right people in the city that I need to talk to or set up meetings with. If you could help me there, I'd really appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate you coming to us and telling us about the issues that you're having. I think can't offer you any solutions this evening other than I do think that I, myself and the mayor, who's out of town this week. But I think that the mayor and myself and maybe our city manager can get together and look at your situation and then get back to you. We don't know what's going on until we hear from you. So I will personally talk to the mayor and the city manager and we'll get back with you if you can give me a little bit of time, maybe a week or so, so I can talk to the mayor.
Yeah, if you need, you know, anytime, anywhere, anyplace. If I need to meet somebody or a conversation or an email, I'm...
I will involve you, but I do want to talk to them and see what we can do based off the information that we have and get back to you. You may be happy, you may not be happy, but I tell you, we will at least look at your situation and thank you for bringing it to us.
Okay, thank you.
Agreed, thanks.
Is there anybody else that would like to talk during the audience participation? All right, please state your name, come to the podium, state your name and address.
Thank you. I'm Stacy Suniga and I am actually the president of the Latino Coalition. I came here to support my wife as she spoke to you about our big celebration. But it hit me, I thought I should talk to the council about another issue that I've been meaning to come and talk with your city manager about. So another hat that I wear is I've been appointed by the commission for the 250 2026 Celebration of Freedom for our country. It'll be 150 years of establishment for Colorado. So there's a commission that was established by Governor Jared Polis to celebrate the 250, 150-year celebration for our country and our state. And so I've been appointed by the commission that he appointed to be the advisor liaison for the counties of Weld and Larimer. And so my commission is to reach out to communities and gather people to create an event or how are we going to celebrate this as a community of Weld and a community of Larimer? And this is going to be tasked by this group that I can bring together to really mandate that. So it really is important for Evans to be involved. I would love to sit, I don't know if it's with Mr. Sims or with someone on your council, to figure out who would be great in your eyes to be a part of this committee and really put forth a great celebration of our 150-year formation for Colorado as a state of the United States of America.
I think you are on the right path. I think contacting Mr. Sims would be a very appropriate thing to do. And he can get with the staff and yourself to see what we can do to...
Great.
Have that kind of a collaboration, thank you.
And this is open to also resident members. So we want very diverse, we want input from, you know, people that live here, you know, in Evans and in Weld County. So I will talk with you, I'll get a meeting with you, Mr. Sims, but I just wanted to put it into, get it on your radar since I was here. And I'm sorry, I'm dressed in jeans and a sloppy shirt, but at least we got some communication going, thank you.
Happy, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? Is there anyone online who would like to speak? Nobody? Okay, all right. Well, we will move on then to the approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mayor Protem.
Okay, with that, I would have a...
I move to approve the agenda.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. We have the consent agenda. Approval of the July 16th, 2024 city council meeting minutes?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion's passed. Onto new business, item five. We have a consideration of, this is very exciting actually, a consideration of purchase and sale agreement for acquisition of real property. And we will hear from staff.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. This is a very exciting business item, something that we've been working towards for quite a while now. So if we recall back to July 16th, we had a discussion where direction was given to negotiators to negotiate the sale of land to the south of us, 5.13 acres that would be the future home of the Evans Police Department. After looking at various areas throughout the town over the last several years, this became an opportunity, so based on the city council's direction, we, Brian and I began working on this negotiation to be able to see if we could come to an agreement with the property owner. As you're aware, discussion started at $2 million. We countered back at $1.5 million to account for some of the demolition that would have to take place on site. Property owner countered back at $1.75. We countered back at $1.65. And at the end of the day, we came to an agreement at $1.7 million for that 5.13 acres. Now, this is in line with the information that was contained within an appraisal for the property that we received. So the market value of the property was listed at $1.7 million. So I'm excited to announce that we were able to successfully negotiate this transaction at $1.7 million. So what I'm looking for tonight, if the city council is interested, now I have authorized staff to pay the $20,000 earnest money. So we've got that taken care of. Brian has also been coordinating with our owner's rep on due diligence for, due diligence for the remainder of the transaction. So what I'm looking for tonight, if council is interested, is approval of the purchase and sale agreement for $1.7 million plus closing costs contingent upon successful due diligence and then authorizing me to execute all necessary documents to close the sale. Madam Protem, I will send it back to you.
Yes, so we'll again start with questions or comments first and with the zoomed-in mayor. Do you have any questions or comments on this issue?
Oh, yes, I have a comment, no questions. First of all, I want to say to the community and to our police department, this is for you guys. This is going to be a state-of-the-art facility if this is approved, something that the community is going to be very proud of. I know everybody in our community supports our law enforcement. I know for a very long time, the council has been working really hard to get you a new police facility, which you deserve. As we continue to grow as a city and your department grows, you've ran out of room. You need a state-of-the-art facility where you feel safe, the community feels safe, you can do your job without being crammed, three, four people to a desk, where, you know, any suspect or anybody that you're interviewing feels safe and secure. This has been a long time coming. And I really hope that this not only benefits the current police department, helps with morale, but also helps with recruitment and retention. This is something that I want to thank council and staff for working really hard and doing their due diligence to finding the right piece of land. I want to thank people in the community that's also been involved in supporting our police and helping us also come up with ideas for property and everything. So this is a long time coming. I know it's something that's been dear to my heart as being mayor and I'm really looking forward to this for our community and our police department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I have a lot of questions.
You have a lot of questions?
Yes.
Okay, now that is.
Approximately how many properties in the past two years have we looked at to try to locate a suitable property in places, police station?
I can think of three that we very seriously pursued, Brian, if you have.
Yeah, you guys have been, the men in blue have been doing this for a long time. So when I came as special projects manager a couple of years ago, that was one of my first tasks was to kind of go through this. We had the, we had some potential property on 42nd Street and 23rd. As that fell through, we really started to see what was available. So at that time, I think I brought 11 properties, 10 or 11 properties, to see what was suitable from the feasibility study that we had received prior to my arrival. And then we started narrowing it down from there.
If you, I want to get this on the public record, that's why I'm asking the questions because most of it was in executive sessions. Since many, some of these properties fell through, there have been delays. So I'm sure you, would you agree that the cost of being able to build this has risen quite a bit?
Inflationary costs definitely have risen. And I think we took that into consideration as we were looking for parcels. I think city manager Cody Sims made a decision, probably about a year and a month ago, to hold on a piece of property because of that and to ensure that we were financially stable to build this facility for our officers and our community.
Because of this, all these delays, would you say that there was some frustration in trying to quickly acquire a new site location and be willing to pay more for it than appraised value?
I guess like, you can go ahead and answer that question, I mean, this isn't a hearing, Mr. Neal. I just, do you have any questions about this contract or this piece of property? I mean, we've, we've kind of been going through this, is there a point that you need to, that you'd like to get to?
There's a point. The appraisal was presented in executive session, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Would you, would you agree that by negotiating with the seller, that we saved the taxpayers $300,000?
Absolutely. Again, I get direction from the city manager to ensure that we had that appraisal prior to negotiations.
Okay, then if this hadn't been done, it would have cost the taxpayers more?
It would, it would have been a decision that we would have made from his initial offer to us, yes.
Okay, so your point is that we, we were able to save $300,000 from the asking price and are paying what the assessed value was.
Appraised value, yes, ma'am.
That was the long way of getting to that, so.
Yes, Mayor Protem.
That, that's great, that's a good, good point. Thanks for pointing out that we saved $300,000 in that.
Well, let me point out one more thing now. The appraisal was handed to the city council. How long did the city council take to before they started fussing and discussing?
I think this is, again, this has been a project that has been high priority for city council. So I think you guys were ready to discuss with, with any opportunity that was presented to you. So it was, it was done quickly because you guys knew what, what you wanted to do.
Was adequate time for the city council to look at that half inch thick appraisal?
That, that's a decision, I mean, I'm happy to share that with you, the decision tonight. If you would, you want to table this and share it for another date, that's, that's absolutely something we can do.
I would like to say to that then, that I believe you, what you may be trying to get across is that we did do our due diligence. We looked at many properties, the budget was discussed, we had the $2 million that was appropriated. This wasn't a decision that was made lightly or, you know, off the hip. So I think that maybe also part of the point you're trying to make is that we did a lot of work on this, so.
I just want to add that I think, agreed, we did fantastic. I think, I think certain times, like, things don't happen to you, they happen for you. And I think this is one of those moments. And I remember when I went to Aurora, we, I went to their courthouse and I noticed that everything was like together. So it had a campus feel, you know, and I think that in essence is what we're trying to achieve here. You know, in Evans, I, we don't have a landmark or somewhere that should tells you, hey, you're in Evans. And I think what's happening now will provide like a, like a space where everyone knows, hey, that is Evans. And we'll have a great, you know, police facility for our police department. And as, as was mentioned, yes, they're working with very, very limited spaces and I think it's time to provide the space, the area and the ability for, for them to continue to do the amazing work that they're doing as well as keeping, you know, safety, you know, that value that we hold very close to our hearts here in Evans to ensure everyone's safe and in order to provide that, that safety, we need to give our officers that adequate space and facility.
Is there any comments over?
I don't have any additional comments or responses to the contract or information in front of us.
I would just say, the mayor has worked diligently on this. My only comment would be, if we go to move to, for a vote, I'd say the mayor should make the motion.
Agreed.
It is still my thunder. I am trying, I am trying to, because I, I just wanted to say, because we have been working on this for years.
Yes.
And I have spent a lot of time on this myself and I am very, I'm looking forward to this project, especially where it's going to be at because I, it will be a nice shiny asset here in the east side of town and it's going to stay in this campus and it's going to be a, just, I, I'm just a beacon on the hill, I think. And so I am so happy that we're finally getting this done. I've been excited and then let down and excited and let down over a few things and then we hear from the public about where's the police station? And so it's just, this is just a very exciting moment. I'm very happy that staff did their, just
Great negotiations.
Great, great negotiation. So I am very impressed with that and I am very thrilled to get this done. And with that being said, I do want to turn this over to our mayor, thank you very much, and hear what he has to say with a suggested motion.
Well, thank you, Mayor Protem. Now, I, I just want to say again, thank you to our police department, thank you to our community and a special thanks to staff and council for your, all your hard work and due diligence on getting this police station good, moving to, forward into fruition. So thank you for everybody for your hard work. We couldn't, I, I couldn't have done this without you. We're a great team and I'm glad we were able to work this together and get this done. So with that being said, I move to approve the purchase and sale agreement with BT Associates for the acquisition of real property located at 3819 St. Brine Street, Evans, Colorado for 1.7 million plus closing costs contingent upon successful due diligence and authorize the city manager to execute all documents required to close the transaction. I further move to approve a preliminary budget revision in the amount of $3,329,872.
Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded and, I'm sorry, do I have to read this?
Unfortunately, you do.
I'm sorry, Scott says I don't.
Go ahead, I don't think we can say this one too many times.
Yes, it's true. Say it. Okay, I will. I get to say it too, thank you. I moved, oh, sorry. There has been a motion to approve the purchase and sale agreement with BT Associates for the acquisition of real property located at 3819 St. Brine Street, Evans, Colorado for 1.7 million plus closing costs contingent upon successful due diligence and authorize the city manager to execute all documents required to close the transaction. I further move to approve a preliminary budget revision in the amount of $3,329,872. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much. Awesome. Okay, so on to the next business, we have consideration of ordinance number 826-24, amending Title V, towing services of the Evans municipal code, including section 5.34.040- I have a problem here. Towing, oh, sorry. Towing service registration section 5.34.0, oh, sorry, five, repeat, I need a vowel. 5.34.080 towing list and towing list rotation and section 5.34.090, storage facilities. First reading, holy smokes. We'll hear from staff.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the council. Dan Reynus from Evans PD, those are a lot of numbers. Essentially
It was a dash in the wrong place, too.
To, to boil that down, essentially what we're doing is kind of trying to clean up our, our existing tow ordinance and also create language in there that'll allow us to use additional resources. An example right now is the present ordinance allows only three tow companies to be on our rotation and those companies have to be within five miles of the Evans City complex. We have found that in the past couple of years to start becoming very restrictive. Another example is one of our three companies on our tow rotation just went out of business one day and we had no idea about it. So what this does is it opens it up to more tow companies to get on our rotation. And then also the other big thing it has is it allows us to impose sanctions on tow companies who refuse to come do toes. If they refuse three times in 30 days, they can be removed from the tow rotation. So it kind of incentivizes the tow companies to come tow what we need to get towed. Before we put too much work into this to expand our tow rotation, we did do research to see if there are any tow companies in Evans that would fit the criteria and on a cursory search, we weren't able to find any. So that's why we're, there are tow companies in Evans, but that do not have the storage yard requirements, indoor storage, fence, security, et cetera, et cetera, that's required by the ordinance.
So this in no way would harm any of our local businesses?
Not as far as I can tell, no, sir.
Thank you for doing that data research.
Do we have anything that's towed to any of our facilities?
We do, on rare occasion, we have vehicle storage out at the Public Works Complex and those vehicles are evidence where the vehicles themselves are articles of evidence. That space is few and far, so we try to use that very sparingly. If we do have to impound vehicles for a search warrant to see if there's evidence inside the vehicle, we'll have it go to the impound yard until we can do what we need to do with it.
So can we use a local company that doesn't have storage for those instances where we need it towed to our lot, our facility?
I, I guess we could. It is very few and far between that a vehicle itself is evidence, but theoretically, yes, we can definitely look at that.
Trying to keep the business local.
Sure.
Anybody else have any questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, thank you.
Anybody else?
I have none.
Fred?
Do, I noticed that there's a problem with large vehicles. Is it possible to maybe set up a rotation with companies that want to, want to tow that can do the large vehicles, kind of as a separate, but still be on the, the list for the smaller vehicles?
That is definitely something I can talk to Mr. Lyman about. Oversized vehicles are a challenge, specifically RVs, and not every tow company has the necessary equipment to move those. So that's definitely something we can take a look at.
Any other questions? Be interested in entertaining a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number 826-24, towing services as amended on first reading.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to adopt ordinance number 826-24, towing services as amended on first reading. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Great. Next, we have consideration of contract for design services, North Point Park. We'll hear this from staff.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem, council, Ty Hamer with Parks and Rec. Part of the 2024 budget is design services for the North Point property. We went out to bid in April of '24, had a great turnout for our pre-bid site meeting. We had, I want to say 15 people were signed in on the pre-bid list, ended up receiving 10 proposals in June. Went through a different review process with so many proposals. I individually went through and reviewed all 10 proposals, tried to narrow it down to our top four and then I recruited additional staff members, three other staff members, Curtis, Ephraim and Brian, to go through and look at those one more time. All four of the top proposals, we ended up reviewing on a matrix scoring system on the following criteria. Adherence to the RFP, related experience with similar projects, qualifications, familiarity with Evans, their schedule, their plan or their description of plan on how they will complete the project. And we did consider price, although the RFP specifically noted that price was not the determining factor in this situation. It's not the heaviest thing that we valued. I wanted to talk a little bit about Confluent Design, the company that came out on top after our scoring matrices. Confluent Design really rose to the top. They've got great experience with City of Evans, they've got great experience in open spaces. Some of the comments I received from their references really stood out. I included a couple of them in your packet, but I also wanted to just read them to you tonight. The one letter recommendation that Mike Hansen shared with me, there was a quote I pulled out of there that I wanted to share with you. Kevin slash Confluent was one of the most professional and qualified consultants I had the pleasure of working with during my time at Prospect. His background and experience gave him a distinct understanding of the needs of public agencies that provide park, recreation and open space services. One other quote came from the same department, but a coworker of Mike's. And he said, "I can't say enough good things about Kevin Lyles and Confluent Design. We're a small district with limited resources and Kevin was incredible to work with throughout the process of designing, building and opening, opening our newest park." Those were the kind of comments that I heard from their, from the references that were provided. I spent some time with Brian, talking to him, he is familiar with Confluent Design. They worked on our Arrowhead Open Space project, the design that we have and we're waiting to go into construction here soon. And Brian's currently working with them on Tuscany, I think it's a little bit on hold right now. At this point, you know, Confluent Design didn't come in with the lowest bid, but they outscored everybody on the review matrix and I really feel like they're the most qualified, probably the best company to provide the services. They're the most familiar with City of Evans, they've worked with us recently. They know what direction we're heading with our parks and open space. At this time, I'd really recommend them for this project. And so that is on your, your agenda tonight to consider approval of a contract with Confluent Design for the North Point property and park services. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you have any questions or comments?
Sure, just one question for you. Normally, you know, when we put out the bid, we usually look for the scoring criteria as well as the price. And I know you, you shared your, your overall assessment of, of the higher bidder. What, what set them apart, that the, what was the biggest difference between them and the other that the other could not provide that this, this company could provide?
Sure. You know, I think what really did it for me was their, their specialty, their kind of philosophy and outlook towards open spaces. It's what they do, this is, this is what they focus on. Some of the other companies, although they had experience with Evans, it was not necessarily in the realm of parks design. A couple of them worked on the 47th Street, why can't I think roundabout? And some other kind of more Public Works type of projects, right? Where these guys really focus on, their opening statement in their cover letter had to do with, you know, their passion for open spaces and for properties like this. When I looked through their examples of similar work, they have a lot of projects that were bodies of water with open space around it, a lot of very similar projects to the North Point property. And that's what did it for me.
Great, thank you.
Clarification, North Point Park will be where?
So North Point Park is in the middle of North Point subdivision. It is, it's an irrigation pond and a detention pond for our stormwater system. It is about, I want to say it's almost eight acres, but four acres of it is pond space and four can be developed. It's right in the middle of the neighborhood, it's surrounded on about three sides of City of Evans. One side is actually Weld County, two, Brian, you might have to correct me, to the northwest is kind of Weld County and then the rest is the City of Evans.
Okay, for the record, just in case people don't know where this subdivision's at, where's this subdivision?
So if you go up 37th Street and I want to say you turn on, I think it's 23rd and then it's that neighborhood right in there.
It's off of 29th. I live in North Point.
Still learning my streets.
So 37th, right on 29th, so it's like the neighborhood behind.
I, I just, we have some open spaces where I, I just, we have some open spaces where it's not designated, so I wanted to be sure that the public listening to this knows exactly where we're planning on the north park, um, North Point Park. So, um, is there any other questions for staff or comments?
I'd like to know more about the TB group. What's their background?
Well, you know, um, the TB group, they were our lowest bidder. Um, they had some experience with City of Evans. I would have to go back to their proposal and really dig in, check in their references. Again, the scoring matrix put Confluent on top, and that's where my focus was for references at this point. But I'm happy to go back and do some more research and see if that's the direction council wants me to go.
Well, eighty-one point six seven over eighty-four, and we're so close on that matrix, and we're so close on the dollar figure, and we're spending taxpayers' money, due diligence would say we'd probably need to look a little bit more at the TB group, and that's my perspective, before we just jump and spend a little bit more money.
They were scored high because of their low bid as well, and where Confluent was scored lower because of their price.
So I guess my understanding had always been previously that we were kind of forced to take the low bid. And that's what um, a lot of community members have complained about with some of the projects that have gone awry. So I would like to hear from Scott on how, how that's changed.
Before we
I'm sorry.
Before we bring Scott into that.
Yes.
I absolutely agree that if you have a relationship with a, a vendor, that we should not be looking at the lowest price. But in this particular case, the margins are so close, it would be advantageous of us to at least explore who the TB group is and see if they're qualified for the position before we completely outrule them.
But from what I understand from Ty is that they scored higher because they are the lowest bidder. However, they do not have pretty much the knowledge of, you know, park designs and, and park work where the other one was more focused on, you know, they worked on the roundabout and some street projects, but they were not focused on like park and recreation. And I think that's what he's saying is that's why they stood out the most over the other one. Yeah, they were the lowest bidder, but they don't have the experience as, as they do.
I must have missed that part. So is that correct, Ty?
Yeah, so after the initial reviews and we did our scoring matrix, um, I went back and I gave five points per reviewer for the low price. And I think in the Confluent one, I actually gave him three points because they were kind of in the middle price zone. And that brought the scores a lot closer. If you were to take the price part out of there, um, Confluent really stood out on the qualifications, the experience, that side of, of the proposal. Um, Confluent kind of rose to the top. I, like I said, I cannot remember all the details of the other three proposals at this time. I would need to go back and review uh, to provide you with more information if I, if you'd like.
We typically um, choose the lowest, most qualified, um, and that's what it sounds like here. And I was looking at the, the number based off, you know, both TB and Confluent, so it's thirty-six and then TB is forty-five, and forty-five because of the price point, so they scored higher. And as you mentioned, if you were to take that out, it would look different.
Yeah, the, the margin was much narrower once we considered price.
So I just, oh, I'm sorry. I, I see the, I see the city manager, or sorry, city attorney gonna chime in on if we're obligated to, to take that?
Well, I would, that's actually what I was kind of gonna address. So I was in governmental purchasing for five years. And when I was in governmental purchasing, there started to be a transition in best practices. And some of that came from, one of my favorite books is John Glenn's autobiography. And I'm not gonna, it's not an exact quote, but he said, one of the weirdest feelings is you get up into space, you're all alone, and you realize every piece of equipment that you're flying in was low bid. Um, and so in order to get better ROI and better experience, we've s- transitioned from almost exclusively, exclusively using what's called an invitation to bid or a request for a bid. And in those situations, if that's put out in the street like that, then you absolutely have to take the lowest bidder unless they're not responsible, i.e. they're not providing you what you're asking for. When you put out what they've put out here, it's, it's an RFP, it's a request for a proposal, then you're saying, hey, I'm taking into account primarily, is this gonna work out best for the city? And that's why you have a committee that goes through and um, we have the score sheet from them, and that's where those scores come from, is somebody reading the packet and saying, yes, this is the best package.
And I, I appreciate that, that explanation. I understand that. I just want to make sure that we are still not legally obligated to take the lowest bidder, no matter what.
So uh, the answer to that is no, you're not legally obligated to take the lowest bidder. It is the lowest qualified bidder, and I think your discussions have sort of covered what constitutes a qualified bidder. There are other factors you can take into consideration. Is the product that they're gonna give you slightly better than some of the other bidders? Uh, history with the, the city is also another factor that's been upheld as far as taking that into consideration. So it's not a bright line anymore of you have to take the lowest, uh, the lowest bidder.
And I appreciate that, and I agree with um, what the mayor had pointed out was that this is not the lowest bidder, but it's also the most qualified for the job on, and has the experience with actual parks instead of just, you know, landscaping throughout a city.
We, we really felt like, like they would do the best job for the city.
And I also, I think that there's times where, you know, you see me question the staff, and then there's other times where I fully um, appreciate that the, the staff has done their due diligence and, and um, I, I would have to trust the staff on this one for me. So.
Oh, I'm definitely not questioning the staff at all. I just wanted more information about the TB group. And so to make an educated decision on my behalf, I would like to see all the data in front of me presented as it should be. And the score's great, and I absolutely trust the team. We have a phenomenal team. But as an economist, I'm looking at this and saying, well, jeez, the margins are awfully close, and then it's a nominal figure, so I'm gonna go with your suggestion. But going forward, let's just keep that attuned, that if something's, if the margin's this close, I'm gonna start asking more questions. Hi.
I agree with that.
I think we used to make more data, so I, I would say to the staff the next time, absolutely.
I think it's crystal clear, and so.
Some, some people are more interested in it, some people not, but it would be um, a case where we can ask questions if you do that, that deep look into it, so I appreciate it. With that being said, uh, does anybody want to make a motion?
I move to award the North Point Park Design Services Contract to Confluent Design for ninety-five thousand nine hundred nine dollars.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to award the North Point Park Design Services Contract to Confluent Design for ninety-five thousand, oh, ninety-five thousand nine hundred and nine dollars. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, the motion's passed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, so now we have number eight, consideration of contract for consulting services, the Recreation Needs Assessment, and we will hear from staff.
Alright, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Council, Ty Hamer again, uh, Parks and Rec. Um, I've got some notes on this one because this is a project that's was on the slate a while ago, went away, came back. So I'm gonna try to fill you in on how we got to where we are today, but um, uh, let's see, back in twenty twenty-two, um, when Evans updated their master plan, one of the thing that was identified in that plan was a a strong need to reevaluate the Parks and Recreation's plan, right? Um, I think that is the, the one we're going off of right now is from the two thousand era, um, and, and it needs to be addressed. Uh, they identified a couple of principles in the master plan um, that had to do with recreation that we needed to talk about, uh, the first being development of new parks and public spaces, recreation facilities um, that meet the need of, of our increasing community, uh, that meets the need of community idea, i- identity um, and can help develop a sense of place. They also identified that Evans, Evans will diversify recreation programming to meet growing and changing community needs with high quality and affordable services. Accurately assessing the community's needs is a fundamental part of the planning process. Um, this needs assessment will help us do that by focusing on determining program, facility needs, cost recovery opportunities, um, and operational challenges. Some of the things that this assessment, um, if we decide to move forward, will help us identify in the short term as well as the long term, um, are things like building a vision and a mission for our recreation programs and facilities, um, something that will reflect the community's values, um, address unmet needs of recreation right now. Um, it'll help develop strategies for programs, facilities, um, and help us plan out the next ten years of recreation. Um, this will define, define recreation programming, um, opportunities, um, and facilities. Um, this will help to identify certain levels of standard or, or service levels, standard service levels. It'll help develop actions uh, regarding recreation program facilities, something that reflects Evans' commitment to providing high-quality recreation activities for our community. Um, it'll also help us identify kind of what's, what's in the future for recreation, right? What are the next best, best practices? What are the trends in the industry? Um, and help us kind of grow with the industry as well as our town continues to grow. Um, the other element is the element of cost recovery, helping us to develop a cost recovery plan, uh, maybe look at opportunities for other revenue generating streams with, with recreation. So that's what a Recreation Needs Assessment could bring to us. Um, it'll be a, a guide to planning the future for recreation. Um, in twenty twenty-three, uh, we did go out to bid um, for this project. We received two respondents at that time, two proposals. Um, similarly to uh, the North Point Design Contract, um, Brian and his team scored these two groups um, based on things like adherence to the RFP, related experience with these type of projects, qualifications, their schedule to complete it, and of course their price, right? So they did the same idea. Um, these two groups that came in, uh, we had Pros, Pros Consulting and Matrix. Their scores were quite a bit different, um, their prices were quite a bit different. Um, it, it was a, a big, big challenge there, right? When this came back to uh, my plate a few weeks ago, Cody and Brian and I sat down. Brian explained to me why at the time they were looking at this group called Pros Consultant. I went back, tried to really review and analyze both of the proposals that we got. Um, and it became really clear why the team last year selected Pros Consultant. They, I mean, their experience with recreation and with the state of Colorado and with Northern Colorado and the Front Range was up here where the other ones was kind of down here. Very little work in Colorado, a whole lot of work in Colorado. Pros Consulting, I'm gonna just read you a couple of things that popped out to me. Um, they've completed over eleven projects here in Colorado. They've got a combined hundred years of experience in their team um, in recreation. They specialize in parks and recreation planning. They've done over three hundred projects for just parks and recreation. And total across the nation, they've done over a thousand of these planning projects. Um, the other group, Matrix, although I'm sure they could do the job, their qualifications, just when it came to recreation, weren't quite there. They were more involved in, I want to say, compensation analysis and studies. In fact, I believe one of their references was the City of Fort Morgan where I came from, and I believe they're the ones that in two thousand and seven during the, the recession analyzed um, all the employees in Fort Morgan and restructured how many employees the city would have, that kind of thing, right? So they were more involved in governmental processes rather than recreation and parks. So what I did after, after kind of reviewing and analyzing and trying to put my own perspective on these two proposals, I reached out to Pros Consulting to see if they were even interested in the project anymore. Um, they did express interest, uh, however, they did need to review their quote. Um, I actually found a typo in your packet, so you have a table folder or a table sheet up there today with an updated memo. I, I made a typo in the number which changed a couple of numbers. But they discovered that their quote was gonna need to go up by about forty-nine hundred dollars. Um, and so you'll see the first chart in your uh, staff report is the prices that were from twenty twenty-three. And then you'll see down here for the request, um, if we approve this contract with Pros Consulting, their updated quote is eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-five. I somehow typoed um, that into nine hundred and eighty-five, which changed the whole thing. Uh, so that's fixed on your table copy. Again, again, this is not the low bidder, but this is the most qualified group, and I really think that they are gonna do what we're looking for. They're gonna help us identify the needs of the community, uh, the future needs of our growing community. Um, this is what they do. Recreation is what they do, and I really feel like they're the most qualified company. I agree with what Brian and his team discovered last year when they first looked at this project. Um, and that's what we're here tonight. We're here recommending Pros Consulting for a contract to help us through an updated uh, Recreation Needs Assessment. Um, and really that's all I have for you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any questions or comments?
Not just a comment. Thank you for the clear explanation of why we're going with the higher bidder versus the lower bidder, so I appreciate it. But also to that, I, I appreciate this. This is something that uh, has definitely needed to be addressed. You know, as we are a growing community, our needs for recreation are going up. Um, it, it would be nice to have, you know, hear from the public, see what they, they want for our community, and hopefully get something for them here so they can, you know, don't go outside of Evans and for their recreation needs. So I, thank you, and I support this.
Thank you. Um, was, I have a question, I'm sorry. Um, was Matrix, is this the Matrix Corporation that was involved in the twenty thirteen flood recovery?
I have no idea.
Think so? Alright, because um, they had a very lasting impression on me and um, I'm, I'm happy to go with the other company. Um, the other question I had was, didn't we have a um, a grant for this?
That I don't know either. I believe there was a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars uh, budgeted last year. It has been rolled over into twenty twenty-four for this project.
Okay, alright, because I thought we had had a grant at some time to do this. And so those are my questions. Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
I have comments. Um, I am for this. I think this is needed. I think um, looking at that there's not a full-time employee in this position, um, based off the earlier um, meeting. I think we, especially because this department does generate, you know, revenue in, in a different way than all the other departments. I think we definitely need something like this to look at that. And also, we have like a median age of twenty-nine, which means a lot of the families are young and have young children. And it's definitely important to have a good recs department and programs that can assist, you know, our youth. And only that, you know, provide that exploration of sports, um, which is important to, to children. So I'm excited for this. I am for this, and I, I can't wait to hear what comes out of it.
Anybody else have any questions?
So I just would like to know some history. Um, why did we put this out in April and then not move on it?
Sure. Because I was in the middle of um, several significant personnel changes at the time. And so rather than, rather than taking on that project in the middle of turnover, I put, put the brakes on it for, for a short time.
All for that? Okay.
I just, forty-nine hundred dollars is, uh, how long do we hold fixed and firm pricing when they submit a bid?
Well, it's been over a year um, since they submitted their, their quote. I may say in here what it was guaranteed for. I don't know on the top of my head.
Yeah, the original bid was provided back in April of twenty twenty-three, at which time I was going through personnel changes.
Right. But.
My guess is the, the, typically it seems like these quotes that I receive on these different things are guaranteed for thirty days. I don't know if there's any legality when it's an official RFP, how that works or RFP, but um, I would have to look at their paperwork to see if there was something in there on their side about that.
I would be surprised if it's not in our language that there's fixed and firm pricing, because that's for a certain amount of time. And I just, that's the only thing that worries me is, so we are going with more expensive bidder, which I'm not concerned.
so we are going with more expensive bidder, which I'm not concerned about. But what I'm concerned about is we're going with the more expensive bidder, and now we're also saying, "Hey, we're gonna pay more than you even bid."
Yeah.
And we don't know if we'd go to Matrix, they'd say seventy-six. I mean, by all means, I don't wanna stand in the way of this 'cause I do think it's a very good project, but, um, yeah.
Interesting point. Anybody else?
Well, I'm also concerned, uh, somewhat about the indifference in the bids. But, uh, like you, I have some concerns about Matrix.
So I, I, um, does anybody else have anything that they wanna ask or say? Alright, so, um, yeah, I'm, I'm for this project, uh, or this, um, uh, to getting this started, we've been talking about this for quite some time, obviously, you know, at least a year, but a, and a long time before that, too. Uh, so I, um, I am for, um, for this, and I am interested if anybody is ready to, um, make a motion?
I move to award the Recreation Needs Assessment Contract to Pros Consulting for eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Uh, a- actually, that's the typo number.
I apologize.
Eight-eight-five.
For eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars.
I second. There's been a motion to award the Recreation Needs Assessment Contract to Pros Consulting for eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.